This is November 4th, 2024, Monday at 7:18. And this is the Warren Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel, WCAT, Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. And our first people, we'll be able to...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is an A and R for 1212 Southbridge Road. Stormfield Capital Funding.
Is this it?
Yep. Okay. But no one is here to represent them, so we're on our own.
Let's see, Bill was going to be joining, I believe via Zoom.
There he is.
Hello.
Hi. Can you tell us your name and who you represent? You're not near your computer, right? Can you hear us?
I can.
Yeah, can you tell us your name and who you represent?
Yes, William Terrell, PLS. I work for Chapel Engineering. I was hired by Stormfield Capital to produce this plan.
Can you just tell us a little bit about the plan?
Yes, the plan is basically, the main intention is defining the property line because the deed was extremely vague. There are a couple of issues with the property. One was, there's a parcel that was called for on the assessor's plan that isn't in that spot. I'm not sure how that got put there, but it isn't there. The, there's a parcel that has been referenced in previous plans as a potential dispute between as to who owns it. My client is giving that parcel to the abutter to resolve that issue. And there's a parcel that we're cutting off to give, to allow the butter shed to be legal for them on the side street.
It's right on Southbridge Road, Parcel 2?
Just one moment, I pull up my plan.
C numbers.
Parcel 6 is the parcel we're giving to the abutter number 70 Forest Avenue. Yep.
Maybe if you share your screen and show your decline in.
Well, I'm not gonna do, I was gonna try.
Parcel 5 is to become combined with the rest of them, they're all going to be.
Okay, what's the name of the map?
It's right on the corner of Forest Avenue and Southbridge Road.
I know, but what's the assessor maps? Is it Mass G S or something else?
Are assaulted, map 10. And it's, I believe it's... Parcels 137 to 141, I believe.
Thank you, I didn't need it.
Hey.
I don't want you falling down.
Hold, hold up.
This is the area. Are you sharing the screen with me?
I can.
You do actually fumble around. Can you see the full screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I see.
Can you guide us and tell us what's the story?
Okay, so the parcels we're dealing with here are 137 through 141. The parcels. Parcel 140 doesn't really go there. I could not, through the deeds and any other plans, I don't know where that parcel came from. It is close to the acreage for Parcel 138 and a piece into 137, there's a wall in there. If you look at my plan, I show a parcel there. So I think that that may be what that was describing, but I'm not sure.
This is 138. Yeah. Bobby, you're talking about 140, right? 140 you're talking about?
Yeah, 140, I couldn't place that here. It didn't, it didn't fit with anything other than, like I said, it's, the description, it's close to 138 and a piece of 137 because there's a, there's a wall that goes into 137. And, and if you look at my plan, if you add those two parcels up, it's close to the area, but not exactly. So that's the only thing, I can assume that maybe it was intended to be there and not where it was placed.
So you're gonna create a lot, a parcel 2, parcel 3, parcel 4, parcel 5, and parcel 6?
No. If you look at the zig lines, I'm combining.
Not creating them, but like redefine, right?
Being them.
Sort of on the plan by deeds and wall monumentation out there. And in the end, it's gonna be one parcel. The entire thing's gonna be one parcel.
Okay, parcel 4. You have parcel.
Which is not quite 30 acres, well, combined. Yeah, it's gonna be about 30 acres there.
So these are gonna be combined.
Okay. Right, yeah.
It's a parcel 3. Which is 138.
And parcel 4, which is 137. Part of it, and this is, yeah, this is all 137.
Oh, no.
Like a liner, like the stone wall or something?
Yeah, yeah. Parcel, parcel 3 on my plan, they're, they're deeding that to the abutter. They're giving it to him because there was a question with the title as to who owns it. Nobody could figure it out. So my client, and for the, just for the sake of clarification, are saying, okay, he can have it. We don't want any rights to it. They're gonna give it to him.
It's combined.
Yeah, so that, that essentially wound up being combined with parcel 1, no, parcel, assessor's parcel 135, I think it is. I think it's Zoom.
Yeah, 135.
Yeah.
So 138 and 135 will be combined?
Yep. And, and.
140, 141, 139, and 137 will be all combined.
Yeah, okay.
But part of 137, a, a 20, a strip that's 20 feet wide roughly, will be deeded to number 70 Forest Street. Because he has a shed that's on the property and the client, the, there's, he has no need for that property there. So he's gonna deed that to him, so his shed will become part of his lot and that'll help resolve any issues with that.
Okay. But what's the... Is that right though? The setback is gonna be five feet from the property line with that shed?
Yeah, but it's already, it's already over the property line completely.
Well, this, he put the, he put the shed over here, so he is giving this credit to him.
I know, but now you're making a non-conforming.
Right, is the, is the setback?
Well, what's, what's the setbacks in rural?
I don't know.
Well, it doesn't matter for a shed.
Oh, it doesn't?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as there's a 200, it's called feet.
Okay.
And if it's more than 200 feet, it doesn't have to have windows.
Yeah, it's a pretty big shed. Okay.
Yes. And that's all, that whole, a good piece of that parcel 137 there is wetlands. It's all non-buildable. So nothing will ever be built next to that shed.
Oh, this was, yep. And that. Good. Yep. Okay. Okay, do you have any questions, David?
I'm just curious, because they're saying that that parcel 140.
Yep.
Yep. Doesn't belong to anybody.
What happened when you clicked on it?
Yeah, did you talk?
I think it's, it was owned, it was assumed that it was owned by the, the previous owners. Stormfield and the previous owners. But in reality, that, when I tried to put any, that parcel together at all, it, it, you know, through the deeds and descriptions that I had, the, it really wasn't there.
Well, so Stormfield owns it now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so essentially, it's gonna be, if you want, it's gonna be combined with the rest of it.
Same owner, right?
Yeah.
Oh, same owner, just it wasn't defined as of today, it's the same owner.
I think it was somehow, somebody created it there, I don't know how or why, because no, and I researched this back to, back to the beginning of time practically. And, and the description on this lot never got any better on any of this stuff. So it was, it was very challenging.
Okay. Bill, what are the Z's on this plan?
That, that indicates the, the property line's gonna, the ownership crosses the line. It's both, they're owned on both sides. It's by the same owner. There's separate parcels that are described, but they're, they're all owned by the same person.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or... Fees were paid and all that stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Paperwork submitted?
Yep.
They owe back taxes?
Off the top of my head, no. Apparently did not make a note on my list, but.
All right, well, someone wanna make a motion to endorse?
That's how Derek can work in magic. What's that? Yeah, I think that's an old house. I don't think it's, they've been abandoned. Lord Dracula's old girl over. Okay. All right, they make a motion, we endorse the... Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. Just in case.
Okay, I make a motion. We endorse the A and R for 1212 Southbridge Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Billy's eye.
David Ducrene eye.
Ed Longigan eye.
Richard I have.
Eric I.
Motion carries. Okay, so I made an omission here. We must announce, I'm gonna stop sharing, that Drew King is attending remotely. On Zoom. Was there anything else I need to do with that? Just mentioned that, right?
Yep.
He just mentioned it. Don't do the signees later, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, you are all set? Your client is all set?
Thank you all very much.
Yep, you're welcome. All right, and we don't have any other A and Rs, right?
Yep.
Okay. So we talked about just keeping a placeholder because people could show up right now with an A and R. You don't have to be on the agenda. It's the only thing that allows that. So we thought we'd just keep a placeholder on there, just in case. All right, Jane Wirick, Land Use Manager, CMRPC, with the draft zoning diagnostic presentation.
Good evening, thank you for having me.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, hello. So I had forwarded a copy of the zoning bylaws to Laura last week that just has comments in the margin and recommendations in some instances. I do have a report, it is just going through our internal review. I will probably just let you take a sneak peek at it tonight, but I do have a presentation. I don't know if Laura wants to share it or if she wants me to share.
This is the, is this it?
Jane, is that the one that you would be, like, just like 20 minutes ago or so?
Yes.
Yes, so Rich, you have a copy of that? Jane, if it's...
Between the two of you, whoever it's easier for.
Rich has already got it.
This is it, right? Okay, so I will, we go back to Zoom. I will share. Okay, there we go.
So I think we had met once before, a few months ago. We've been working kind of in tandem with the folks that are working on the master plan process right now, comparing some notes and looking at some of the previous planning studies to determine what kind of recommendations related to zoning were previously recommended. We'll need to do some homework to see which ones have been accomplished, which ones maybe are no longer relevant and which ones we still need to consider in looking at updating the zoning. Next slide, please. So this is pretty obvious, but why complete a zoning diagnostic? To identify inconsistencies, redundancies, ambiguities, or errors and omissions. To modernize the document to be clear, concise, and easily readable. To identify amendments needed due to changes in mass general law. To identify newer topics in land use planning, such as the recently approved legislation at the state level to allow accessory dwelling units by right with certain criteria. And to accommodate desired growth patterns. I know in the case of Warren, there, there are some desire changes, particularly out by the highway. So we'll get into that a little bit later on. Next slide, please. So some of the previous planning efforts we reviewed were the 2006 Master Plan, the Economic Development Plan that actually got incorporated into the previous Master Plan, the Hazard Mitigation and Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plans, the Rural 11 Prioritization Plan, Open Space and Recreation Plan, and then the current Master Plan Process. The only one I have not included in here yet was the Heritage Landscapes Inventory. I'd like to probably take a little bit extra time to go through that to see if there were recommendations there. Next slide, please. So the Economic Development Plan had several recommendations. Some of the key ones are to establish a central business district as well as a general business district in the village centers. To establish a highway business zone along Route 67 and 19, as well as light manufacturing district. To revise or expand the wireless communications facility overlay district. To explore the feasibility of more direct access to Route 9 or Interstate 90. To update the zoning bylaws to support commercial development. And to establish design guidelines and a review process. Next slide, please. The Master Plan had other chapters as well. Some of the recommendations in that were to explore amending the zoning, to permit flexibility and provide business investment incentives. To amend zoning bylaws to provide flexibility for special permits. To explore zoning to allow for housing types for all ages and income levels. To plan for expected, an expected increase of older residents. To form business districts for central business, highway, and industrial uses. To revise the residential subdivision regulations. And to establish open space preservation zoning or cluster zoning. We won't be able to do the subdivision regs as part of this particular project with the comprehensive zoning update, but one of my colleagues is working on a model subdivision bylaw. And he will be working with different communities on implementing that for them. So next slide, please. The Rural 11 Prioritization Plan recommended reviewing the priority development areas identified for commercial and industrial uses and to explore their potential for housing. Recommended focusing on the provision of residential land uses in the village and town centers where there is potential to accommodate a greater number of units and housing types such as infill development. To explore zoning changes that might allow or encourage a greater diversity of housing types. And to target housing and development areas with good roadway, water, and sewer infrastructure. Next slide, please. The Hazard Mitigation and Municipal Vulnerability Plans recommended addressing current stormwater drainage issues and proactively incorporating resilience to extreme precipitation. To study regulatory solutions to prevent new development from making stormwater runoff worse. To protect the natural environment and ecosystems and to support quality of life, which could cover a number of things. Next slide, please. The Open Space and Recreation Plan recommended identifying trails, recreation areas, boating areas to map and engage private landowners for permission to map trails. To create additional parking locations at or near Cutter Park and the Town Common. To identify wildlife corridors and develop bylaw language to protect these areas from solar developments. To investigate existing conservation restriction on property on Little Rest Road. And strategize potential recreation uses or expansion for this property. And to enact the Community Preservation Act. Now, I understand that since these studies have been done, that, you know, many of these things may have been achieved already. Next slide, please. In the current master planning process, the list that you... In the current master planning process, the list that you will see in the report is longer than this. This is just representative. Recommends developing zoning restriction to restrict development on steep slopes. To develop an overlay district for Wright's Mill. To evaluate land to the north of Interstate 90 for potential zoning amendments. To consider revisions to site plan requirements. To study the suitability of transfer of development rights. To study the accessory apartment issue. To consider allowing conversions of single-family by special permit to two- to three-unit condominiums. The town may want to consider if any other areas are potentially viable priority development areas. And if so, amend the zoning accordingly if needed. And then to amend regulations to minimize visual impact. Next slide, please. So in looking at the current zoning bylaws, first of all, it might look like a lot of notes and recommendations, but I really do need to commend the Town of Warren. You've really kept up with a lot of amendments over the years. And so I actually think it's in pretty good shape. And that's going to allow us when we do the comprehensive zoning update to focus more time on implementing new things that may be coming out of the master plan or recommendations from prior planning efforts such as the land just north of the highway. And so I think it's an exciting time to explore new opportunities. But with many of the communities we're working with, we are recommending relocating all definitions to the definition section. That's a decision this community can make. You don't have to do it, but we just find that it's easier to find everything if all the definitions are in one place. There were several terms within the document that I did not see definitions for, so I was recommending that new definitions be developed. Notice there's a section on divided lots. Ideally, in the planning world, it's not preferable to have split zoning on a lot. So if the town is amenable to it, we would recommend reviewing those lots to decide if amendment should be made so that there is no split zoning on a lot. And looking at the use table, the MCOD and MDOD districts, a lot of the boxes in those columns are not filled out. So I'm recommending that that table get completed just so there's no question about whether something's permitted or not. And I'm sure you all know about the new law regarding allowing accessory dwelling units by right in the state. And it allows units up to 900 square feet or one-half the size of the primary dwelling, whichever is less. And you cannot regulate who's going to live there or income restrictions. But reasonable restrictions can be made such as setbacks, height limit, and you could require that they use the existing driveway so there aren't additional curb cuts, stuff like that. And of course, if it's in an area on septic, they would need to meet all the building code septic requirements as with any other dwelling. Review the conflict for a multifamily dwelling. There's two different sections in the definitions and the dimensional regulations where one of them says that includes two to four family units as multifamily. And the other one says over four is multifamily. So, or something to that, I don't have it right, right in front of me. But just to make sure we, make sure we're clear on what we're considering multifamily. And recommend evaluating and amending the dimensional regulations for the village district. I understand in speaking with Sarah O'Brien, who is leading the current multi-master plan process, that a lot of the buildings in the villages are probably non-conforming. And so if we look at wanting to make it easier for people to build on some of those existing lots, I know that people tend to get frustrated with having to go through the special permit process. But as an infill site, if we want to encourage that kind of development, we probably want to look at amending those regulations and hopefully remove some of those non-conformities in doing so. Next slide, please.
So Jane, divided lots means a piece of property that straddles two zones? Is that what, like rural and village or something?
Yeah, that was my understanding. We've called it split zoning. But the way it was described in that section, I assume that that's what it meant.
Okay.
Some additional recommendations are to consider whether, and there is quite a bit of language in the document already about stormwater requirements. It can be expanded more. And you might want to consider if there should be a separate section for stormwater and low-impact development, like its own bylaw section. I did not see on the EPA map for the MS4 permit, the stormwater permits, that I didn't look like Warren was a community that had the MS4 permit. Is that correct?
What is it?
Don't have a stormwater bylaw, if that's what you're talking about.
No, no. And you do cover quite a bit of stormwater language in the bylaws. Some communities have this MS4. It's a stormwater permit through the EPA. And it's evaluated at the state level also, I think through, maybe DEP? Oh, no, Water Resources, maybe. But some communities that are part of that program, the EPA has come out with new requirements to try to reduce impervious area and accommodate more water percolation on site rather than having more stormwater runoff. And these communities are hiring engineering firms to do an analysis of both zoning and subdivision regs and some other documentation to see where the community stands with regard to their stormwater permit with the EPA. And it's coming back that they're having to make a lot of amendments such as narrowing road widths or minimizing parking or using pervious material. And it's just to try to, you know, reduce the need for stormwater infrastructure and actually let the water percolate on site. So, you know, hopefully it's better for the environment and it's not costing the town more money with infrastructure. But if you're not part of that, we're not going to worry about it. So the map was kind of vague and I was trying to estimate where Warren was on the map. And it did not look like you were one of those communities. All righty, moving on. Consider amending Section 11.2 to use a formula for determining the number of lots in open space residential development rather than requiring submission of a conventional subdivision plan. I think if you're wanting people to cluster housing and preserve more open space, it might be a little bit easier a process to get through if they don't have to create both plans. And we do have examples, I think from Amherst, where they use a formula to determine what the appropriate number of lots should be. Let me see. You do have a section on commercial energy storage systems. And I believe it sounds like it's very similar, maybe identical to the terminology we've been hearing lately is battery energy storage systems or BES. And so I would want to, you know, when we go through the comprehensive update, want to go into that a little deeper. It does say that those storage systems are not allowed for solar projects, which I believe is not in conformance with state law right now. Many communities tried getting battery energy storage bylaws passed through the state. And I think Pittsfield was finally the first one that received the Attorney General's approval. So just, you know, with all the laws regarding solar and not limiting them too much. There's also new language on battery energy storage. So we'll want to take a look at that to make sure that's up to date. There have been other updates to mass general law regarding marijuana or cannabis. I've noticed that your bylaws, do you have some amendments? I do want to verify that all of the amendments to mass general law have been implemented into your bylaws. And I was speaking with Joyce, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Ichoker?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, I wasn't even sure how to say that. We had a discussion about some of the recommendations she had for amending the zoning. And she would like to see development of a bylaw limiting development on steep slopes. So that's something we want to probably look into. You'll also see when you receive the report that I did that I also pulled a map on what type of material is on the surface around town. And so it evaluates these type of surface materials for whether they're suitable for development or not. And I think combining that with the steeper slopes may give you a really good idea of which areas should just be not touched and other areas that you might want to focus the development on. And then, let me see. The previous Rural 11 Prioritization Plan did identify land north of Interstate 90 for areas of preferred development. So that's in line with the, what the town has been discussing with the master plan team, too. Also, there was a Supreme Court case regarding regulating the content of signs and how they need to remain content neutral. So towns can regulate for location, size, maybe materials, the type of lighting. But nothing that would hold one type of use to a different standard than others. And so ever since that case, maybe about seven, eight years ago, communities across the country have been updating their signed bylaws to make sure that there aren't any First Amendment issues and that it's content neutral. Next slide, please. Some of the other considerations, working with someone from DCR, Conservation and Recreation, they do have a model state floodplain bylaw that they are recommending communities use. And so we would be comparing the state model to the existing floodplain bylaw. And as I mentioned earlier, we might want to consider a stormwater LID bylaw. If you don't want to, that's fine. There is quite a bit of language in the bylaws already regarding that. Wanted to talk about whether the town would welcome cottage housing or flexible housing. One development I've read about in outside of Atlanta, somebody, it's an infill site, there were two existing bungalows on it. They came in, they renovated the bungalows and they added, you know, a duplex or two and a couple of cottage houses or ADUs to make like a little cluster development within town and walkable to things. And then I don't know if short-term rentals is something that's been on your radar. The state did pass a law in 2019, I believe, that requires short-term rentals such as Airbnb or VRBO or other companies to register the short-term rentals with the State Department of Revenue to charge the room occupancy tax. And it also allows communities to adopt their own short-term rental bylaws. Some communities may determine that some neighborhoods aren't appropriate for it. They might want to determine, should there be a maximum? I don't know why my computer is not charging here. Uh-oh. I might have to find another outlet. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I don't know if that outlet isn't working. Let me see, let me see, let me see. Okay. I think we're in business now. Maybe I just need to reset that GFI outlet. But anyways, so short-term rentals. Don't know if it's an issue for you. It is in Westbrook Field because of the lakes they have there. And people were renting lakefront homes as a short-term rental and having wild parties and disrupting the peace for people in the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, we believe it's a combination of strategies and amendments or new bylaws that will really help the town to achieve its goals. We recommend considering best practices such as those with the state's smart growth recommendations and balancing growth with open space protection. And then in working with one community, we've held several public information sessions before bringing any proposed changes to public hearing. Just trying to make sure that the public is educated, they know what these bylaws are about, and hopefully get more of their support. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, I want to digest it, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. No, no, Jane. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, when you see the report, it's even more detailed. As far as the recommendations from the 2006 Master Plan, I put those recommendations in a table with a column to the left for the status. And I thought I would ask all of you to take your time, maybe over the next two, three weeks or so, and see what questions you have, maybe check off which one of those, any of those that have been achieved, such as developing the OSRD bylaw. And then we can come, get back together maybe in about a month so that I can hear your comments and finalize the document for you.
Okay. All right. Good. Sounds like a plan. That would work. Yeah. That's good. Yeah.
Yeah, I figured it's too much information to make any kind of decisions tonight. And actually, no decisions really have to be made. I believe the town was awarded funding for the comprehensive zoning update, correct?
Yes.
We do, did we? Okay. Yep.
I think so.
I think that's what I heard. So this is good timing. As I mentioned, working with the master plan team, we're able to share notes. And hopefully by time we dig into the comprehensive update, we'll have even more feedback from the master plan team. There might be recommendations coming out of other chapters that I wasn't aware of yet. But the two work hand-in-hand really well. And as I mentioned, you do not have to accept all of my recommendations. Some of the ones that do pertain to law changes, of course, I'll strongly recommend. But some of the other ones will be a matter of the town's preference. So.
Okay.
Good. Good. Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
You're very welcome. Any additional questions?
Do you want to take your time to look this over?
You can read this and digest it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, and I will send the report to you as soon as it gets through review in my office. And you'll see what I mean about the status column. And then maybe your first meeting in December, we'll look at maybe getting back together to finalize things.
Okay, good. All right, good.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you for doing this.
You're very welcome. My pleasure.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. All right. Is there a motion to accept minutes for October 21st?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes for the October 21st meeting.
All in favor?
Eddie Billy's eye.
David Ducrene eye.
Ed Longdigan eye.
Drew King eye.
Richi Hacker eye.
Bills? We have no bills, I guess, right?
We do.
Well, we do have.
We just have the one. It is $2,891.57 for Lot 3 Geotechnical Engineering Services from O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakin.
Said moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Eddie Billy's eye.
David Ducrene eye.
Ed Longdigan eye.
Drew King eye.
Richi Hacker eye. We don't have a bill for a lot... We don't have a bill for Lot Four?
Just got that Lot Three one, prior to this meeting at least.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get one trickled through tomorrow, but that's, that's all I've gotten so far.
Um, okay, new business, I'll just mention, I sent out the Z B T thing. Um, but basically, so we can't really discuss it, but I think at this point, we're not gonna discuss it because it's gotta go through legal. We have to have a remand hearing, uh, there's a lot of steps before we go signing any paperwork.
Right.
I'll just say that, so.
Okay. True.
Any other new business? Any old business?
Did we get the plans for the uh? Is this the? Special permit?
I am still waiting on the little hand-drawn. It's, so we have the. I think it's the, the.
Site plan?
That we have the site plan, and we have, um, they have their site plan with, just indicated where they're gonna have. You know, parking and things like that. Um, as far as the rest of that goes, it's currently in the appeals stage. Um, I believe that that ends on November eighteenth, we'll wrap that. Um, and other than that, paperwork should be complete unless there's something that is sneaky that I am unaware of.
So we're missing the floor plan and they offer the elevations too.
The elev- Thought we had the elevation. I'll double-check the um. The file on that.
It's very important, what is the, is the uh, floor plan? But they did offer the elevation, they, they said they hadn't.
Yeah, I will double-check on that. Thought we had that in, but.
Because with the, you know, with the, with the floor plan, we could have identified that other business who was operating over there.
Yeah.
Easier.
Yeah.
That's why it's important. Cause it, you know, what's this, what's this? Oh, that's not us, oh.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will follow up with. I will check the file, confirm. And then if we still need, I will give them a holler.
So the other thing is Agilitus owes us, I think, do they owe us a plan? Are we good with what they did?
They're supposed to make the changes and get it to us, the final.
Like the, yeah, like a nice bill or something, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so they may still be working on that, so. And when are they gonna start that too, I guess that's the other thing, right?
They were supposed to notify us when we, when they were gonna start, so.
Yeah.
We can have the peer reviewer out there.
Yeah. Just to repair your plans in state. Maybe just touch base with them and just ask them when they anticipate starting?
I will get them to make a holler, this is the one, sort of hubbing all that.
Yeah, just see what the status is.
I wouldn't be surprised if they say they already completed it.
They wouldn't do that.
Surprise.
Yeah. Right.
Alright, any other old business? Okay, comments and concerns?
None.
None?
No.
Next meeting would be the eighteenth, right, is that, or the twenty-fifth, did we?
And s- just something to consider while scheduling the next meeting is that there is all. Already a meeting sort of on the books for Monday, December ninth. If you sort of wanna look at the ninth, look, you know, look at November fourth, look at December ninth and figure out between there.
Probably gonna kind of be a bad week because that's Thanksgiving week.
Yeah, it is. And you're gonna do the eighteenth then?
Yeah, because it gives us definitely two weeks. We're gonna have much by the eighteen? I've been pretty slow around here.
Yeah. We're not gonna do this zoning thing until December.
Right.
We don't have. Do we have anything coming up, maybe?
So December ninth was already scheduled.
Oh, the marijuana thing.
For, yeah, for that special permit continuance. Uh, for the little breast road, sort of micro license cultivation facility.
Yeah.
Uh, so however long you think that might take is sort of gonna, I think, determine the.
Yeah. Do we have anything in on that yet? We haven't received anything, right?
Not since that, that was all well before I started, um. So the special, the special, all the. All the goodies leading up to the hearing were received, the hearing was scheduled and they had to, they asked for a continuance because I think they had a family emergency or something. Um, so that is still just the first sort of public. Opening of the hearing, um, to occur.
No, we did open it.
Oh, you did, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, uh.
They were supposed to get us a lot of information, plans and stuff like that, what their actual plan is.
Okay, I have not received.
You haven't received anything.
Anything from them.
Oh, I mean, they still have almost a month, so.
Yeah, they're supposed to get like engineered plans.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the full nine yards.
On it. Cause all we had was like a sketch of a greenhouse that was there.
We gave them the list of the checklist, that here's what we need. The estate cannabis requirements too, which they didn't quite have, so.
Yeah. Okay, so. Yeah, you're gonna just do the eighteenth for now and see what happens?
Yeah, what are we, and then we could.
Just so we don't have to, cause this is a lot going on Thanksgiving week, so.
Yeah. And then we'd have the ninth, and then we might not meet until sometime in January, right?
Possibly.
Cause the twenty-third or the thirtieth, I guess we could just see how those go, but, yeah, okay.
In Spanish, there's a say it, it makes rhythm, it says, being quiet, you're cuter.
Is that what we were going for?
Yeah.
Not sure it worked.
Would you like me to let Jane with a C M R C P know, sort of to tentatively plan on December ninth? If that's gonna work on her end for, for looping back?
Yeah, yeah, I guess so. I mean, it really depends what the, in terms of the length of the meeting.
Yeah.
What the marijuana people are gonna be presenting, so. Okay, yeah, tell her tentative right now. Time out. Alright, so the next meeting is the eighteenth of November, Monday at seven fifteen P M.
I do a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Danny Billy's eye. David DeFran.
And Longigan eye.
Reaching eye.
Richi Hacker eye, we are adjourned.